All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regular session of the Orange County Legislature dated Friday, April 8th, 2022. I would ask that this meeting be called to order. I would also further instruct that all silence on cell phones and electronic devices. And as we stand for a moment of silence at this time, I would ask that you keep the people of Ukraine in your thoughts and prayers as the fighting continues and the dire humanitarian situation unfolds. This will be followed by the pledge to the flag. So I would ask that you stand now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also ask that you please remain standing. I'd like to introduce Nina Jodri, Jonah Campbell, Samantha Salit, Olivia Holland, and Liam Kevins, who are part of our Youth in Government partaking in the program today, and they are going to sing the national anthem. If they want to come forward, they can. If you could all stand at the mic, that would be great. The mic, make sure it's on. When it's red, it's actually on. Gotcha. Okay. So whenever you're ready.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Actually, I would ask that our singers come forward. We have a little bit of freedom. This is Legislative Weekend, and we have some certificates to present to the Senate, and we thank you for attending. We'd love to have you back.
Thank you very much. Nina?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Olivia Holland?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Liam? Thank you. And Jonah? Thank you very much. Well done, everyone.
At this point, I would ask that the clerk do the roll call, please. Fagion?
Here.
Paduk?
Here.
Amo?
Here.
Anagmostakis?
Present.
Benton?
Here.
Breschah?
Cheney?
Here.
Ellers?
Present.
Hines?
Here.
Luhan? Menuda?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ramos?
Here.
Vuskovich?
Here.
Sassi?
Here.
Sierra?
Stiganga?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Tautel?
Here.
Tui?
Here.
Benelli?
Present.
Seventeen present, four absent. Before we start our meeting, first of all, I see that some of our Youth in Government students are still here. I want to thank you for participating in the program. You had a very lively discussion mock session starting earlier today, so for those people that weren't there, they really missed a great discussion. And I want to thank you, and it's great to have you back in the legislative chambers for this very important program. I do believe we do have a very important proclamation this morning. It has to do with Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I believe Harry Poor, the Deputy County Executive, will be joining me for a presentation to the Mental Health Association. We're here this morning to recognize something that is very, very important and dear to our hearts here in Orange County, and that is the annual Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Start by Believing Day in Orange County. And what this all really talks about is the fact is that today, we start believing when people say that they have been sexually assaulted. And I don't have to walk around this all morning walk. And we want to just congratulate the ladies here this morning from the Mental Health Association, who have done a wonderful job here in Orange County, and we want to support them to the best of our abilities. And together with the County Executive and Deputy County Executive, we present you with this proclamation, and we stand ready to assist you in all your efforts. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you so much.
You know, it's hard for me to believe that we even have to recognize this and acknowledge this. I've been very lucky. I've been surrounded by women my whole life. I have four sisters, three sister-in-laws, a wife, a daughter, two granddaughters. And the fact that we have to even talk about sexual assault as a reality in our community is very sad. And I'm particularly concerned right now what's going on in the Ukraine with the attacks and the brutalization of women in that event right now. So I thank you on behalf of the County Executive of Newhouse for bringing this to the forefront. It needs to be acknowledged. It's a severe, brutal activity, and it should be met with severe consequences. But thank you, awareness is very important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. So did you want to say? Sure.
So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming today. My name is Sheena Carey. I'm the Director of Crisis Services for Mental Health Association in Orange County. On behalf of the Orange County Rape Crisis Program, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us today in recognition of April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month, excuse me, and our second annual Start by Believing Public Awareness Campaign. This exciting initiative challenges us to improve our response to sexual assault. Start by Believing reaches friends and family members of sexual assault survivors, as well as the professionals who may interact with them. This campaign challenges everyone to respond to disclosure of sexual violence by expressing belief and support rather than doubt, shame, or blame. Why should we start by believing? Historically, survivors of sexual violence have faced reactions of doubt and blame when they reported the crime or have reached out for help. When this disclosure of a sexual violence is met with disbelief, rather than support and comfort, it may increase the trauma of the initial assault and decrease the likelihood that the survivor will be able to pursue justice and healing. In turn, this means that the perpetrators are not held accountable for their crimes, and they will remain free to sexually assault additional victims. Start by Believing provides an opportunity for communities to unify with one meaningful message for survivors of sexual assault. We hear you, we believe you, and we are here to help. This first step is making a personal commitment to start by believing when someone discloses that they were raped or sexually assaulted. Please take the pledge and support MHA's Orange County Rape Crisis Program in supporting survivors of sexual assault. Thank you very much. And just so everybody knows, the pledges are downstairs by the DMV, so if you would like to do that, feel free. And I have the privilege of introducing Kathleen McQuaid, Crisis Services Manager, who will share a little bit more about the campaign.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to be here this morning. I want to thank the legislation government. Thank you for the proclamation. We really appreciate you guys' support moving forward. As April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, this month marks the celebration of Orange County's Second Annual Start by Believing Day. This campaign is a call to action for citizens that will truly spread awareness about sexual assault and help survivors to begin to heal. Join us in the Start by Believing Public Awareness and Action Campaign lodged by End Violence Against Women International in 2011. We are working to end the cycle of silence and transform the way society responds to sexual assault. Our focus is to specifically change the response to survivors of sexual assault by expressing belief and support rather than doubt and blame. It may be surprising to learn, according to RAINN, out of 1,000 sexual assaults, 975 perpetrators were walked free. Out of that 1,000 assaults, only 310 are reported to police. Fifty reports lead to a felony conviction, and 25 reports will be incarcerated. Every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. Statistics show that rapists don't attack once; many reoffend multiple times. Start by Believing stops the cycle by improving how we respond to survivors. Thank you for joining us in this campaign.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you, Harry. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
The Legislature would also like to recognize the following for the month of April.
Youth in Government Day? National County Government Month, Parkinson's Awareness Month, National Volunteer Week, April 18th through the 24th, Autism Awareness Day, April 2nd. April is also Autism Awareness Month. Prevention of Animal Cruelty Month, Donate Life Month, Earth Day on April 22nd, and a shout-out to the town of Walk Hill, who had a celebration last evening for their 250th anniversary. So, at this time, there does not seem to be any public participation who signed up, so I will call upon Majority Leader Fagion.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of November 8th, 2021. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Again, Majority Leader Fagion.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move to vote collectively on Agenda Items Number 16 and 17, and Items 37 through 40. Second.
Okay, if... All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there are no objections, these items will be voted on collectively. I would also like to withdraw at this time Agenda Item Number 8. It is a bond resolution, and this is the request of the Parks Commissioner, Jim Brooks. If there are no objections, this item will be withdrawn. Okay, moving on, at this time, I'd like to call upon Legislator Agostakis to request a consent resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to request to place on the agenda a resolution canceling interest, penalties, and fees with respect to a certain parcel of real property pursuant to Section 1182 of the Real Property Tax Law.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Legislator Paduk.
Uh, Chairwoman?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
Yeah, so for the motion to vote collectively on, what was it, Items 35 through 40?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay. Never mind. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Legislator Ramos. Okay, so we'll start with Number 1, which is a roll call vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Denying Application for Correction of a Certain Tax Rule Pursuant to Section 550 of the Real Property Tax Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote, as I mentioned, so Jeanne, if you would, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yep.
Anagmostakis?
Benton?
Cheney?
Ellers?
Hines?
Menuda?
O'Donnell?
Ramos?
Vuskovich?
Sassi?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Seventeen eyes.
Number 2, which is a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. The 1A, which is the consent. That's before it's... I apologize. Legislators Anagmostakis and Paduk, Resolution Canceling Interest, Penalties, and Fees With Respect to a Certain Parcel of Real Property Pursuant to Section 1182 of the Real Property Tax Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, this will be a roll call vote, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton?
Cheney?
Ellers?
Hines?
Menuda?
O'Donnell?
Ramos?
Vuskovich?
Sassi?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tui?
Benelli?
Seventeen eyes.
Number 2. Legislator Benton, Resolution Approving the Applications for the Correction of Certain Errors Appearing on the 2022 Tax Rolls for Certain Towns and Districts, and ordering the correction of said errors.
Second.
As I mentioned, this is a voice vote. Are there any questions or comments? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay, the motion is carried. Moving on to Number 3. Legislators Benton and Hines, Resolution Authorizing the Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-Owned Lands Acquired by Reason of a Failure to Redeem Said Lands from a Tax Sale to Orange County Pursuant to Section 10184 of the Real Property Tax Law and Orange County amended Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton?
Cheney?
Ellers?
Hines?
Menuda?
O'Donnell?
Ramos?
Vuskovich?
Sassi?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tui?
Benelli?
Seventeen eyes.
Number 4, please. Legislators Benton and Hines, Resolution Approving the Release of the County's Interest in into a certain deed sale parcel to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
This is a voice vote. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 5. Legislators Benton and Breschah, Resolution Approving the Release of the County's Interest in into a certain deed sale parcel to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, this too is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 6. Legislators Breschah, Vuskovich, Benton, and Cheney, Bond Resolution dated April 8th, 2022. Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements to Hickory Hill Golf Course, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $274,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $205,500, expected to be received from the United States of America, and authorizing the issuance of 68,500 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second.
All right, this is a two-thirds vote because it's a bond resolution. Questions or comments? Okay, would you please take the roll, Jeanne? Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton?
Cheney?
Ellers?
Hines?
Menuda?
O'Donnell?
Ramos?
Vuskovich?
Sassi?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tui?
Benelli?
Seventeen eyes.
Number 7. Legislators Menuda, Benton, Breschah, Bond Resolution dated April 8th, 2022. Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements to Stony Ford Golf Course, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $1,026,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $769,500, expected to be received from the United States of America, and authorizing the issuance of 256,500 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? This too is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote. I would ask the roll to be called, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton? Cheney? Ellers?
Hines?
Menuda?
O'Donnell?
Ramos?
Vuskovich?
Sassi?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tui?
Benelli?
Seventeen eyes.
Number 8 has been withdrawn, so we move on to Number 9. Legislators Tui, Vuskovich, Benton, and Cheney, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Assuming Lead Agency Status Under the State Environmental Quality Review Act (SECRA) With Respect to the Donation of Real Property in the Town of Warwick, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Questions or comments? Since this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 10. Legislators Vuskovich, Tui, Benton, and Cheney, Resolution Accepting a Donation of a Portion of Real Property in the Town of Warwick from Paul Martin Jr. pursuant to Section 2153 of the County Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 11. Legislators Tui and Menuda, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution Confirming the Reappointments and Appointment by the County Executive to the Board of Directors of the Orange County Soil and Water Conservation District pursuant to Section 1807 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Any questions or comments? And I would just like to thank the individuals who have agreed to serve once again, Mr. DeBlak, Mr. Vuskovich, and Mr. Cheney. Okay? Roll call vote. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagmostakis? Benton? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Vuskovich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? Seventeen eyes. Okay, Number 12, please. Legislators Vuskovich and Benton, with Republicans and Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution Confirming the Reappointments by the County Executive to the Orange County Water Authority Board of Directors.
Second.
Questions or comments? And here again, I'd like to thank Legislator Tui and Commissioner Dananga for agreeing to serve on this particular board. So we'll start with a roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Vuskovich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? Seventeen eyes. Number 13. Legislators Paduk and Tui, with all Republicans, Legislators Paduk, Ramos, and Tautel as Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Assuming Lead Agency Status Under the State Environmental Quality Review Act (SECRA) With Respect to the Orange County Veterans Memorial Cemetery Master Plan Construction in the Town of Goshen, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Questions or comments from legislators? Would you please call the roll on this vote? Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Vuskovich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? Seventeen eyes. Number 14, please. Legislators Vuskovich and Menuda, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Accept the Acquisition of a Permanent Easeman and a Temporary Construction Easeman in the Town of Waywayanda.
Second.
Questions or comments on this? I ask the roll to be called, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Anagmostakis?
Benton? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Vuskovich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? Seventeen eyes. Number 15. Legislators Amo, Paduk, and Stiganga, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 143 of 2019, which created the Orange County Legislative Valley View Advisory Committee, a special committee of the Orange County Legislature pursuant to Section 2.02Q of the Orange County Charter and Article 4, Paragraph G of the Legislative Manual.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Legislator Amo, do you just want to clarify what this resolution states?
Yes, Madam Chair, sure thing. Have you appointed me the chairperson of the Valley View Advisory Committee? We reviewed the minutes and reviewed the issues, and it seemed that the agenda on the goal needed to be broadened a little bit to include a little larger scope, sort of looking at a campus. And the second thing we needed to clarify, that the appointment should be generic at the desire of the chairperson, and those are the only two changes.
Thank you, Legislator Amo, for the clarification. All right, with no other comments, roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagmostakis? Benton? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Vuskovich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? And Benelli? Seventeen eyes. Okay, Numbers 16 and 17 will be voted on collectively, and these are to accept appropriated funds from the New York State Department of Health. Okay. All right, so let's do the roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Okay, moving on to number 18.
Legislators O'Donnell, Luhon, Amo, and Totel, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to reallocate Community Relations Coordinator at the Orange County Department of Mental Health, pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Legislator Benton?
Yes, actually, for the past, the last two resolutions, 16 and 17, for technically consistencies, Luhon and Totel are both absent today. Do that, they need sponsors listed for their minutes and for the record to be appropriate.
Those were the sponsors from the committee that can stay for our legislative actions, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good catch. Okay, so moving on, questions or comments on number 18, which is the Community Relations Coordinator? All right, then we'll move on to the roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Okay, number 19, please.
Legislators Totel and Luhon, with legislator Sullivan and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Office for the Aging to enter into intermunicipal agreements between the County of Orange and the Village of Greenwood Lake, Town of Blooming Grove, Town of Cornwall, Village of Montgomery, and Town of Warwick, pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 1190.
Second.
Okay, just for clarification, for those of you that may be following us along, this has to do with the Congregate Meals Program that is held in the towns that were mentioned. This is not only very, very important for senior nutrition, but also for the socialization that the residents that attend these Congregate Meals Program has. It's very, very important for people to get out amongst themselves, otherwise they're kind of sheltered in place, and we all know that that's not a healthy situation. So this is a very valuable program, and I can speak from experience, since I was the supervisor in the town of Blooming Grove that had the Congregate Meals for very many years, and it was very successful, and it continues to be so. So at this point, are there any questions or comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 20.
Legislators O'Donnell, Paduk, Tui, and Totel. Resolution authorizing an increase in the hourly rate of pay for two seasonal positions for the Summer Youth Employment Program at the Orange County Department of Employment and Training Administration, pursuant to Section 2.02O of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Here again, this is an extremely valuable program, and we have a lot of potential candidates in our audience this morning, so pay attention, you might be interested in one of these positions for the summer. Anything else? Okay, this calls for a roll call vote.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. 19, I'm sorry, 17 i's.
Okay, we move on to number 21, please.
Legislator Sassi and Stiganga. Resolution confirming the appointments and reappointments by the county executive to the Orange County Fire Advisory Board, pursuant to Section 18.07 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Hines, I believe that these individuals all represent various different battalions throughout Orange County. Correct?
Every battalion has two representatives, so this is half of it, basically.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do the roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
We move to number 22.
Legislators Sassi and Stiganga, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive to accept a certain gift on behalf of the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Fire Services, pursuant to Section 215 of the county law.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Legislator Ellers, I would ask you to please extend our gratitude to the Chester Fire District that has done. Thank you. We appreciate their donation. Okay, let's call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Number 23, please.
Legislators Sassi and Stiganga, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Police Services, pursuant to Section 4.10 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 24, please.
Legislators Sassi and Stiganga, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept and appropriate funds from the United States Police Canine Association, Inc., pursuant to Section 99-H of a General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Any questions or comments from legislators? All right, since this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. 25A is received and filed, and now we're at 25.
Legislators Cheney, Fagion, Sassi, and Stiganga, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Local Law Introductory Number 5 of 2022. A local law amending local law number 2 of 2016 to include the known abuse of drugs and cannabis on property as a violation of the Social Host Law.
Legislator Cheney?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to start out by giving a little background to the original law that was passed, and that was the result of a young man, 20 years old, losing his life because he was stabbed at a party. The party he was at, there were over 100 people attending, and no adults were present. The original law was brought to us by District Attorney Hoovler, who supported it and urged us to adopt it. The changes that we're looking at today are the direct result of the state of New York passing a law that legalizes recreational use of marijuana. That was not in the original law, thus the need for the change. I have a few thank yous. One to Mary Alice Kovach, the Prevention Coordinator with ADAC, Lauren Savino, the Stop DWI Program Educator, and our Legislative Council, who worked together to form the changes that we're going to be considering today. I'd also like to recognize some of our partners in government, the various coalitions, prevention coalitions throughout the county that work on a local level, very important work, our Departments of Health and Mental Health, groups like Hope Not Handcuffs, and many other agencies throughout the county that support these efforts. I would also like to thank our youth and government participants today. You provided some very interesting input to this. Some of the things that you were looking to change are certainly worthy of consideration. Because this is a local law, we can't do that today, but they will be considered in the future. So with that, I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, legislator Cheney. Legislator Sassi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize Elaine Isloffle from Tri-County Partnership is also with us today, joined by Laura Savino. We heard Laura speak earlier. This tragic event took place in my district prior to me becoming a legislator, and as an educator for 32 years in the Valley Central School District, we're seeing a nationwide epidemic of overdoses among young people, and I'm glad that the youth and government students are here today. And even though it may be socially cool to legalize recreational marijuana, that has a tremendous impact on our schools. And I bet every single student sitting in here today, from all our different high schools, knows what I'm talking about, knows of a student in their school, whether it was an edible, or brownie, or whatever it is, where it might be socially cool, but when you hear of a local school district, a third grader vaping some unknown substance on a school bus in the morning, and you think that's cool, you're warped. You're absolutely warped. So this adds a little more teeth to our Social Host Law, that, okay, we all make personal choices in our lives, I get that, but be careful. Be very, very careful. And I think this is much needed as we move towards legalizing recreational marijuana. People are going to get into cars, especially young people, and they're going to drive, and it's dangerous. So I applaud this, 100%, 1,000% supportive of it, and I'm sure my colleagues will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Sassi. Is there anyone else? Excuse me? Oh, Mr. O'Donnell, I'm sorry, legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So this is for the students. Thank you all for coming today. Appreciate it very much, but I never pass on an opportunity to talk to the school districts, especially the last few years, where this epidemic has gone, to the number of fatalities of our future citizens, our future of the whole country. So to all the school districts out there, you are not the 51st state, all right? When you have a crisis in your school district, report it to the police, all right? The police are your friends, all right? Legislator Sullivan talked very eloquently about having edibles in a house, all right? The next piece of that, those edibles, if somebody in a house party gets turned over to a parent, that parent has a responsibility to turn it over to the police, so it can get analyzed, and it can get backtracked. So God forbid that edible could have caused somebody's death, that it gets backtracked, and the person responsible for that is dealt with in the criminal justice system. So the school districts are not the criminal justice system. They are doing you, the students, no favors by handling this themselves, all right? The police and the criminal justice system are there to protect you, protect your friends, protect your fellow students. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, legislator O'Donnell. Well said. Any other comments? All right, then I would ask for the roll to be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland?
Yes.
Totel? I'm sorry, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Thank you. Number 26, please.
Legislators Luhon and Fagion. Resolution confirming the appointment of Langdon C. Chapman as Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources for the County of Orange by the county executive, pursuant to Section 1001 of the Orange County Charter and Section 151B of the New York State Civil Service Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? Majority Leader Fagion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to take a moment and thank Mr. Chapman for his service to our county as county attorney. He has been a great barrister for this county. He's led our county attorney's office with distinction, and I've been very grateful to work with him on a variety of issues here at the legislative level, and I just want to thank him for that, and I know that he will be a fine fit as the commissioner, and I just, I ask that we all vote for Langdon Chapman to be our HR commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Legislator Sassi?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I also want to publicly recognize and acknowledge outgoing Commissioner Stephen Gross for his many years of service to the county in that capacity. Mr. Gross will be moving over to the IDA, where I'm sure he'll do an excellent job. Mr. Gross is highly respected and trusted, and I'm glad to know that he'll still be with us in another capacity with the county, and I will be supporting Mr. Chapman and wish him the best as well. Thank you.
Legislator O'Donnell?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I spoke at the committee meeting about Langdon Chapman and what a great job he did with the IDA investigation. For those of you in the audience, we recovered $1.3 million, and Langdon Chapman, as our county attorney then, was instrumental in getting that money retrieved from those responsible. So thank you. Good luck in your new position. I'll echo my colleague, legislator Sassi, about Steve Gross is going to do a great job with economic development, as Langdon will do with his new position in human resources. Congratulations and good luck. Thank you.
Well said, legislator O'Donnell. Minority Leader Paduk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with both Rob Sassi and Mr. O'Donnell. And in fact, there were some concerns in the Democratic Caucus, so I asked Mr. Chapman to join us. He did that last night. He answered all of our questions, and I'll wish him the best in his new position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues. I had the opportunity to work for many years with Steve Gross in his various different positions that he held here in Orange County, and now Mr. Gross is on to a new adventure, and I believe our Economic Development Department will be thriving more than ever, so I'm very excited about that. And as far as Mr. Chapman is concerned, I've known him for a very long time. He's been an excellent county attorney. He's been so cooperative with working with myself in my new position as chair, as well as our entire legislative staff. He's always there to be able to lend a helping hand, and with a lot of humor as well, and I see that his son has joined us this morning. So I don't know if it's part of youth and government or supporting his dad, but whichever it is, and I'm sure it's both, it's really good to see you, and Langdon, it's nice to have your son here. I look forward to working with you in your new capacity. Thank you so much for all your efforts. Okay, so with that, we will do the roll call vote and make it official.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
It is official. Congratulations, Langdon.
Thank you.
Legislators Fagion and Cheney. Resolution confirming the reappointments and appointments by the county executive to the Orange County Planning Board, pursuant to Section 9.03 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
She is carried. Number 28, please.
Legislators Fagion and Paduk, with all Republicans and Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature pursuant to New York State Election Law, Sections 3-302 and 3-4201, approving the salary schedules for various election workers for the election year 2022.
Second.
Questions or comments? Majority Leader Fagion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just during committee, through the process committee, this came up for vote, and I just want to compliment my colleagues for all rising to the challenge and understanding that elections are the principal most important thing here in our great America, and that those people that come and work on Election Day, we can't thank them enough, and the salaries and the salary schedule that we have here for them today, it reflects that we are trying the best that we can to provide as much money as possible to pay these people for the work that they put in, and so that I just, we hope that all will support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Majority Leader. All right, this is a voice vote. Any other further comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 29.
Legislators Amo and Paduk, with all Republicans and Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution recognizing April 27, 2022, as Holocaust Memorial Day, Yom Hashoah.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote as well, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried.
Number 30. Legislators Paduk and Cheney, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution rescinding Resolution Number 6 and 308 of 2008, pursuant to Section 2.02A of the Orange County Charter and Section 153 of New York State County Law.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, we'll call the roll on this one, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Number 31A is received and filed, and we move on to number 31.
Legislators Benelli, Fagion, Menuda, Benton, and Paduk, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Local Law Introductory Number 2 of 2022. A local law repealing local law number 3 of 2020, fixing the compensation for the Chair of the Green Committee, a special committee of the Orange County Legislature, to be effective for the term commencing on January 1, 2022, pursuant to Section 2.02S of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Just a clarification, just to make sure, this is removing the salary or the compensation for that particular committee chairmanship? It is not taking away the committee itself? Okay, roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassi, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's.
Okay, number 32A is received and filed. Number 32.
Number 32. Legislators Benelli, Fagion, Luhon, Benton, Stiganga, Aimo, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Local law introductory number three of 2022. A local law repealing local law number six of 2020, fixing the compensation of party leader other than majority or minority leader of the Orange County Legislature to be effective for the term commencing on January 1, 2022, pursuant to Section 2.02S of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Then I would ask the roll to be called, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. 33A is received and filed. 33 is another local law. Legislators Benelli, Fagion, O'Donnell, Menuda, Stiganga, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Local law introductory number four of 2022. A local law repealing local law number four of 2018, providing for the compensation of members of the legislature serving as officers or in a special capacity.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. Thank you. Number 34, please. Legislators O'Donnell, Luhon, Fagion, and Stiganga. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create Administrator and Confidential Secretary to Administrator at the Orange County Office of Assigned Counsel pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Hines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand the positions are required and actually mandated due to a court decision from within the state of New York. So I'm all in favor of the positions, but I do not like the grade 29 for the administrator position. For everybody should know, grade 29 is the highest level grade we have in the County of Orange. And those grade 29s, in my opinion, should be reserved for the highest level of management within the county. Grade 29 is the medical examiner, the county attorney. This position obviously will be filled by an attorney, but I don't think it should be a grade 29. I think the position should be more in line with, say, a 27, or even possibly a 28, depending on who they ultimately end up recruiting and the experience level. But a grade 29, if we make this a 29, then the medical examiner has to be a 32, and so on. And we're just creating a system that is just going to keep running and running and running, and everybody's going to be a 29. Everybody can't be a 29. It just should not be that way. There has to be a hierarchy within county government, and then positions fall in grades beneath that, as it should work. So this should not be a 29, although I am in favor of the position. It should be, in my mind, more in line with, I guess, the highest would be a supervisor within the county attorney's office, or even the county attorney, depending on who they ultimately hire. So the grade is wrong, in my opinion, but I guess a past committee at that grade. Thank you.
Minority Leader Paduk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Hines 100%. During committee, I asked specifically about why it was at the highest grade. I was told at that time that the state will determine the grade and recommend it to the county. I don't know how true that is. I mean, I don't know why we're approving a 29 if it isn't maybe not going to be that. I don't know if there's a way to change it, to leave it open-ended until the state designates the amount. I don't know if that's possible, but I'd make a motion if it is possible.
I don't believe that that is possible at this time. However, the state is recommending the salary. We have nothing to do with the salary. And that, I think, is what's important. I think we've had some very good, and this is just my personal opinion, I think we've had some very good thorough discussion. I think it works, it has merit to have further discussions on this. But at this particular time, and trying to put this in place in accordance with the new laws, I don't think we can make the change, and I'll defer to council as far as that's concerned.
So at committee, the county attorney mentioned that the salary itself is set by the state. The grade itself is a rather large grade from the low end to the high end. So to that extent, there is nothing as far as the state dictating what the grade is going to be.
Legislator O'Donnell?
Thank you, Chairwoman. So this position is to help defendants that can't afford their own counseling, so you know that, which the county already puts up about $4 to $5 million a year. So the state sent down a grant to the county for about $25 million, $5 million a year for the next five years. So we have to assign these positions to spend that money. So basically, the defendants are getting twice as much money each year for the next five years for us taxpayers to help them in their criminal defense, okay? That's debatable on a different day. But today, as far as, many of us agree, as far as the grade 29 goes, is reserved for our highest people. This position goes away at the end of five years unless the state gives us more money. So I'll be supporting this just because the position goes away when the grant money goes away, all right? And it will be debated how much the salary is. All our grades have a minimum and a cap, and I don't know whether the state is going to tell us exactly how much money. I thought that's what we were told in committee, that the state will tell us how much salary is going to be paid. So I'll be supporting this. I agree with the previous comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator O'Donnell. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? All right, then we'll call the roll call. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. Thank you. Number 35, please. Legislators Stiganga and Sassy with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the reappointment by the county executive to the Orange County Electrical Licensing Board.
Second.
Questions or comments? First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Legislator Cheney, who we're reappointing to this board. I thank him for the service, and I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate once again, Mr. Cheney. Thank you. Other comments? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand, Mr. Fagion.
Oh, good.
He's good. All right, roll call. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. Okay, we move on to number 36. And this will be a 2/3 vote because it has to do with bonding. Legislators Menuda, Sassy, and Stiganga. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature as the elected legislative body of Orange County, New York, in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, the code approving the issuance by the Orange County Funding Corporation of up to $56 million principal amount revenue refunding bonds, Mount St. Mary College Project, Series 2022, in one or more series as part of a plan of finance.
Second.
Questions or comments on this resolution? All right, this doesn't necessitate a roll call, so if you would call the roll, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos?
Abstained.
Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. 16 eyes, one abstention. The last four resolutions will be voted on collectively. They are items number 37 through 40, and they have to do with the community development and dispersing of grant funds. And the Youth Bureau, too. So we're going to do a roll call on that. Minority Leader Paduk, did you want to say something?
Thank you. I missed those. Could you have all Democrats add in for those four, please?
Jean, we'll check. Do you have all Dems? You're not.
I have to come stand and roll with your... It's okay.
We'll check it afterwards, okay? Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. Madam Chairwoman and the desk is clear. At this point, I don't believe there is any public participation. Any speakers signed up? Legislator Fagion?
Madam Chair, thank you for the moment. I'd just like to remind my colleagues and those here in Orange County that tomorrow, the Hudson Valley Honor Flight Mission 25 will take place, and that is tomorrow, April 9. And the public is welcome to attend by sending off our veterans who will be flying to Washington, D.C. The sendoff will take place tomorrow morning, nice and early at 6:30 in the morning at Stewart Airport. And the veterans will fly to Washington, D.C. They'll be chaperoned by guardians all day. And then they return to the airport later in the afternoon, actually in the evening tomorrow. And the welcome home will be at Stewart Airport tomorrow at 8:00 P.M. So if you want to, and you're up early in the morning, go on out to Stewart in the morning and send off our veterans as they take part in Honor Flight Mission 25 at 6:30 in the morning tomorrow at Stewart, and then they'll return home tomorrow at 8:00 P.M. And if you've ever participated or witnessed this, it is an emotional and exciting day for the veterans as well as all that attend. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Legislator Sassy?
Yes, real quick, on behalf of myself and Legislator Paduk and Sutherland and Mr. Bresch, [spelled phonetically], last night we attended the 250th anniversary of the founding of the Town of Walk Hill. It was a full house there, and a good time had by all. So happy birthday to the Town of Walk Hill.
Yes. Before we close, I would also like to thank once again our students that have stayed with us through our session. We enjoyed your session thoroughly. It gave us a lot of food for thought, which was always very, very helpful. And we hope you enjoy the rest of your day here in Orange County Government Center. It's been great, and we hope to see a lot of students again come next year. Thank you all for attending. Motion to adjourn, please. Second. All in favor? Good afternoon, everybody. Enjoy the weekend.